All right, it is six o'clock, so I will begin the meeting and call it to order. We will begin with the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, the next order of business is roll call.
Commissioner Colkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Here.
Chair Kine?
Here. Wonderful. Our next order of business will be oral comments from the public. I will start online. Doesn't seem like anybody is on Zoom, and then I'll go out to the public here. Don't think anybody will wish to speak, so I close public comment. Next order of business is the consent calendar, and we will be approving the past minutes from February 25th.
I have a couple of corrections before we do them. Under call to order, flag salute, roll call, it says minutes. Not sure what that's there for. And then Commissioner Burke is noted as being absent, but he's also noted as voting on the minutes.
So where it says minutes, that's just the template of the minutes? So in the box where it has the body of the minutes, it always at the top says these are the minutes.
No, under minutes, that's great, but I don't know why it's under call to order.
It's there every time. Whenever there's minutes, it says that they're the minutes, and I will correct the voting of Commissioner Burke.
That's it.
Thank you.
So with that correction, I move to pass the minutes from the February 25th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. The next item on the agenda will be new business. We will be discussing the 2024 general plan and housing element annual progress report. Sherry, when you're ready, let us know.
Just pulling up the presentation. Should be good. Microphone is on. Good evening, Chair Kine and honorable commissioners. I am Sherry Meads, the Community Development Director, and as mentioned, we are here to talk about the general plan and the housing element annual progress reports for the calendar year 2024. So all of this information is reporting on what the city accomplished last year. So as most of you know, the general plan is the city's highest level policy document. Some people refer to it as like the city's constitution. It consists, ours consists of nine elements that address state mandated elements and then optional topics of concern to the city of Fortuna. And those are things that were, through the community outreach process of the last general plan update, were identified, voted on by the Planning Commission and City Council, and ultimately adopted into our general plan. So the next version of the general plan, which should be happening soon, may look different. We'll always have to have the state mandated elements, but how they're configured and what we would choose to add additionally could change. So the housing element annual progress report, this one should actually say general plan annual progress report. The general plan annual progress report, as I mentioned, is reporting on achievements towards meeting the goals, policies, and programs that are included in the general plan elements. And it's a requirement by the state that we do this every year and that we submit it to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which I will heretofore call HCD. And then the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, which I'll call LCI. It used to be called OPR, if you're familiar with that. It's been renamed to LCI, and it must be submitted and accepted by April 1st of each year. So general plans can be amended up to four times per year, and that can be one project at a time for an amendment, or it can be brought forward as a package. But typically, four times a year, unless it's for affordable housing, there are some exceptions. It can be initiated by someone in the public who wants to change their general plan land use designation to allow for maybe a different density or different uses. Or it can be something that the city initiates. For example, when we adopt a new ordinance, or if we're trying to direct something, we can start with a general plan amendment sometimes, or again, to change land use designations. And last year, the City Council did approve general plan amendments for two residential projects, to change them into more of a mixed-use type of land use and zoning designation so that the owners could make better use of their property, or what they considered better use of their property. So now I'm going to go through each of the elements. I'm not going to read everything on the slides. Most of this information is also included in your staff report, and on the slide you can see. So there were some big things that happened last year. I was hired, that's a big one. We moved into online inspection scheduling through our Open Gov permitting software. We're still finding glitches in it even a year later, or actually, it's been like two years since it was first launched, so we're continuing to work on that. And then we work with regional partners on housing and other efforts. The Mill District specific plan, because this is really only reporting 2024, had a lot of progress in 2024, including the environmental impact report. And then we did some informational presentations. Ultimately, as you all know, the Mill District specific plan and all the associated documents and zoning and all of that were adopted earlier in 2025, so you'll get to hear about it again next year. So economic development is a little bit of a challenge for the city. We don't have specific economic development staff, so it's typically been something that the city manager has taken on, and hopefully that'll change sometime in the future, but for now, that's sort of where it lands. But the economic development section and the element is intended to promote business growth and diversification, a conducive business climate, and a supportive economic foundation. We continue to work closely and support the Chamber of Commerce. We attend, Amy and I both, or we split it, the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission meetings, and then we have the city's Business Improvement District, which continued to promote public events in 2024 as listed. So the housing element, that is a big chunk of our general plan, often considered as a standalone document because it is on a specific update schedule. It has to be updated every eight years, and that coincides with the state's regional housing allocation, housing needs allocations known as RENA. And the housing element has a lot of parts to it. Ours expires in 2027, so we will be starting a process to find you a consultant and beginning that work, because it usually takes a couple of years. So as noted here on the slide, because the housing element includes demographic information, I just was highlighting that the city of Fortuna's population did decrease a bit in the previous year, which is following the trend of Humboldt County. Keep going. So housing element annual progress report, every year, as with the general plan annual progress report, we have to submit a report to HCD and LPI, LCI, that talks about how we are doing meeting our housing requirements and just overall, not just what the state is mandating, but how are we doing with housing? What are we building? What types of things are we building? Are they affordable? Do they use any density bonus or other allocations that would allow people to build more on a lot than they normally would? And so it was included, parts of it were included as an attachment to the staff report. It's also available on HCD's website once submitted. So in 2024, building permits were issued for 38 new market rate units. That is an increase of about 13 from the year before. And as some of you know, the city continues to meet market rate housing unit requirements, but we fall significantly short on affordable housing unit requirements. And it's important to note that the city doesn't decide what is built. That is up to the developers, what pencils for them, what kind of funding can they get to build affordable housing? And the city has not had much interest in that historically. We are looking towards a project next year that I look forward to discussing about affordable senior housing, but for now, we are behind. Transportation and circulation is, it's divided into two sections. Part of it is just the circulation diagram, and the second part talks about the goals, policies, and implementation programs related to the various forms of transportation. And as you note in the slide and in the staff report, we continue to make progress to rehabilitating streets, improving the network, and looking at ways to improve multimodal transportation, looking where can we put bike lanes, and improve trail access, that type of thing. So my favorite element happens to be this one. It is the natural and cultural resources element. It addresses the energy conservation, agricultural, biological, historical, archaeological, and tribal cultural resources. And so this slide shows a beautiful picture of our Eel River and talks about some of the things that we are working on. We also continue the consultation process with our local Wiat and Bear River tribal leaders. This is really delayed, so I apologize. I think it's turning and it takes a second. So parks, recreation, and open space, this is an important one to the city. They hired a new Parks and Recreation Director in 2024. Continue to work on trying to create funding and construct a community pool. We're excited about some grants that we've received, one of which helped us expand an existing city-owned forested property, which ends up creating in total 74 and a quarter acre contiguous publicly owned forest, which is really something to be proud of and to visit. We have been awarded a million dollars to acquire some area along Riverwalk Drive that we are going to retain to create a park, and then also give back in a land return to the Wiat tribe to be able to use for ceremonial purposes, restoration, and public access. So I'm really proud of that. And Parks and Rec continues to facilitate important annual city events. A lot of people are interested in police department information, so I've included the number of arrests and number of calls, that type of thing. It's really important to note that in 2024, there was a reduction of over nine and a half percent in the most severe crimes, known as Group A crimes. And the police department is very proud to have implemented the voluntary special needs alert program that is to assist vulnerable community members with interactions with first responders. And they moved into their brand-new, beautiful facility, brand-new to them, after a bunch of remodeling, at 2600 Newburgh Road in June of 2024. The Fire Protection District provides fire protection services to Fortuna, Alton, Heidsville, Metropolitan, Fernbridge, and Palmer Creek, for a total of 26 square miles and a population of 17,000 folks. I know we all appreciate their efforts. They do great work for us. They equipped our volunteer fire department with five fire engines, one ladder truck, two water tenders, five command vehicles, and three rescue trucks. And again, I highlighted some of the important statistics to show how many times we really depend on our volunteer fire department to get out and help our community members. They also moved into their new facility, one of their facilities, which happens to be a new one, at 1849 Runerville Road in October of last year. And then the health and safety element provides goals and policies to protect and enhance public safety by addressing potential hazards the city may face. And so it looks at things like our hazard mitigation plan, internal safety meetings in-house here, ensuring that all new buildings comply with all of the most recent building and fire standards. And we review all new development proposals for compliance with the city's noise standards, which are in the general plan. And again, we are currently in the midst of updating the hazard mitigation plan, and so you'll hear more about that next year also. Come on, click. There we go. Okay, so now we talk about community design, and that is something that looks at what the community looks like, what we see, and how to create a cohesive and attractive community. So as you can see here, there are certain things that the city has established as being their version of what is important for design, and that's something that the council has directed staff, when resources allow, to work a bit more on creating some design guidelines and design standards, especially for our downtown and historic buildings. And if the thing wants to scroll... Well, it's, there we go. So that ends my presentation. Again, I hit the highlights. If you want to go back to any slides, I'm happy to do that. But what I'm hoping for tonight is for you guys to provide direction to staff through a motion to submit the general plan and the housing element annual progress reports to HCD and LCI. And thank you for your time.
That was wonderful.
Thank you, Sherry, for doing that presentation. First, I'll open it up to public comment. If anybody would like to speak, is there anybody online? Okay. Nope, all right. And then open public comment for anybody here, which is not the case, so I will close public comment, and then see if anybody, any of the commissioners would like to ask anything of staff or have any questions or comments.
I just want to say thank you so much. I'm sorry I had to step out, but that was very interesting, and it sounds so positive, everything you put in there, and it's really nice to see our, you know, accumulation of events, of things that's happened in our community. of events, of things that's happened in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, it's usually one of my favorite tasks every year. I did it for the first few years as a planner for Santa Rosa, and then, you know, it moved on to a different planner as I moved up, but it's just so, it's so rewarding to realize all the good work that we don't necessarily see other departments doing and, you know, the community participating in, so I agree with you, so thank you.
No, I felt the positivity in that. Thank you, that was great. And I'm just having an allergy attack, sorry.
I.
I'm not sick.
Sorry.
Sherry, you had mentioned the State Coastal Conservancy Grant. I saw that was on closed session last week for the City Council, so that did go through?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I just, I didn't see the outcome, so, okay, wonderful, I'm very happy to hear that. And is there plans being developed for the parcel that's in the Riverwalk, on the Riverwalk side currently?
So we currently don't have budget to develop it as a park, but we're seeking ways to try to make that happen. But for now, it could always be used as open space interpretive type of use.
But it's nice to know that it's public, that it's going to be officially public space.
Yes.
Will that be delineated at all? Because I know people use a lot of that space already with their dogs.
It's really hard to tell if you're on whose parcel and.
Yeah, and I know right now, we know, prior to this, it was all private property.
Right.
Now there's going to be a section that will be public.
Right.
City-owned, so, you know.
Yes.
I'm assuming there'll be some kind of delineation.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I'm excited to hear about that, especially the land return. That's amazing, so I'm happy to hear that as well. Anybody else? All right, well, then I will call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to submit the 2024 general plan element annual progress reports to HCD and LCI.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Culkins? Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Hallie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols? Chair Kine?
Yes. All right, wonderful. Moving, moving on to the next order of business to find if there's any staff communications that are currently happening.
Yeah, I just wanted to report to this body that we have received a resignation letter from Commissioner Bennett, so we thank him very much for his service. We will be looking to fill that seat. We're also super excited that Rusty is now full-time our guy. He's made an excellent commissioner so far, and will continue to do so, I'm sure. And I just want you all to know how much we do appreciate and understand how much time this takes, and your commitment to serving the community is not, it's, we don't, we see you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there is nothing else?
Could I ask a question? Anything from Commissioner Mobley? Just asking.
Commissioner Mobley is no longer a council member, or commissioner, which is why Rusty has taken that spot.
Okay, great, so he's, even though his name says on here, it's just from last time. Okay, thank you.
And I want to again thank Ashley so much. We've noticed a few minor things. She is doing this on top of all of her other work, and so I just want, I really appreciate all that she's doing. She's working tonight when she normally wouldn't have to. She's a rock star. Yes.
Thank you.
Has there been any progress with the new assistant, administrative assistant project?
We do have someone that I found out just today did pass the background. I didn't have any question, but you have to go through that process, and he will be onboarding, it's a gentleman. He will be onboarding April 8th, I think it is? 7th, April 7th, so he'll be here soon.
All right, wonderful.
And if we know we're going to have an upcoming trip on one of our Tuesdays, should we email you that date? Okay, perfect.
If there's nothing else, then I will close this session.
All right, I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
I motion to close.
Second.
Aye.